Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. The purpose of our meeting and agenda, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stahl.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Our purpose of study sessions is so that we can come together, share information, build trust, and make sure that questions are asked and discussion is had before decisions get made at the board table, so that our board meetings can be efficient and effective. This evening, we have two primary topics. First of all, we'll have an update on some of the construction projects, and Jim and Julie Jeff will lead us through that. And then the bulk of our work tonight, we'll be taking a look at our district budget, taking a look at our enrollment, and as we continue to plan forward, we'll seek some parameters and guidance from board as we continue to plan for the next couple of board meetings. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Stahl.
Our monthly agenda review, which is our agenda and working document, we've completed the 100s, as you might have noticed, for moving on to the 200s, which is more board governance, more our policies about us. We'll begin those this evening and continue until we're finished. We've got three in the lead tonight. And as Dr. Stahl mentioned, we'll be going through budget, long-range planning, and enrollment plans. And then, just a reminder, the MSBA workshops and conferences coming up in January, which is also part of our goals on our agenda, to attend that. And we'll move on then to the facilities planning and construction update.
Yep. So.
Well rehearsed, as you can tell.
Yeah. So we do have a PowerPoint with some pictures to talk a little bit about construction and the progress. Yes.
Yeah. The format's a little different. This is kind of a follow-up to October 14th presentation, but we had a recent finance, facilities, long-range planning committee meeting, and this was put together by Dylan Toll from Nexus Solutions. And again, some of the pictures, but more of an update around the -- so that's why the format's just a little different, so.
So this is the Twin Oaks Theater. Suits are in, railings went up today. We're -- we have a band concert on Wednesday of this week, and so we'll be out there at that time. Really a nice space. Some of the work going around Twin Oaks on the backside of the building. You can see the stadium there, so give you perspective on where that's at. Again, footings, block starting to go up, and there'll be backfilling and building up from there.
Do you want to talk a little bit about some of the sound reduction?
Sure. So we have window openings that'll be not blocked up, so in the meantime, we have styrofoam and plywood to kind of keep the sound and the elements out. And those are classrooms primarily, and the main office. Over at MAA, we were able to get the floor in at Hidden Oaks, so that turned out really nice, too. This is the east side of Hidden Oaks, the multipurpose addition. They're starting the roof on the south addition, and the multipurpose is windows are going in there now, so those will be turned over in December, I believe.
I think the last classroom, the south addition's going to be a little bit longer, correct? The multipurpose room will come on later.
Correct. High school, fieldhouse, parking lot, we'll be getting that turned over November 11th. We have the lots in. Lights are going up now, there's some safety railing they asked for when, and the lot is striped. Fieldhouse is moving along pretty well. They're starting to put roof sheeting on that today. Trusses are all in, and the generator, we had to relocate that for the cafeteria expansion.
So areas KLM, CDE are off the construction prints, right?
Correct. And we have a -- there we go, right there. So as we go into construction, we break it up by areas, and you can see the -- it's hard to read on this, but you can see what area -- for an example, the new auto shop addition was area G. And that's primarily for construction. It's not how we're going to continue to refer to them. Hamilton Ridge is out of the ground and going up rapidly. We've -- it's a great site for building, and it's moving along pretty well. We are doing punch lists on ALC, Westwood, Edgewood, Jeffers, and Redtail Ridge. Contractors will have to come back and make their repairs or track any work that wasn't done correctly. We're working with contractors going in on the weekends, before school, or during non-student days. Are there any questions?
Is there any question? Just a comment, it looks awesome.
Thank you.
Capture -- I captured auditorium, it looks completely different. It's the same space, just from the pictures, and I love the flooring in the cafeteria, so, great job. It's fun to see it all start to come together and come to an end of construction.
Yes.
The end is still always waiting.
Yeah, the rainbow here.
Yep, there's the wall, but, right. It's nice to see progress.
A bunch of ends.
Mm-hmm.
We're just coming to a group of answers.
Yep.
Yep. Any other comments?
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the district budget enrollment and long-range planning.
Hold on, do you have a budget tracking document for facilities?
Oh, I didn't see that.
It's also in your board packet? So this is part of our ongoing tracking. I know Julie, you can speak to this, too, but as part of FLIRP, we do give the overview of budget relative to contingency as we move forward through this, so.
And you know, as part of the board packet, now you get all the detailed information for that construction fund as well. So all those individual expenditures are out there that relate to the summary.
Questions?
So I did ask a question. Now that we're getting all these closed projects and stuff like that, are we going to be able to get the actual details spent behind each of these released now? Because I understood that the actual management of the detail and the budget and stuff like that was being done both by Nexus on their software.
Right, it's in our software.
It is now?
Well, it's always been in our software. As we spend these dollars, all of that goes, runs through our software.
Oh, okay, because I was impressed with the budget.
And that's all as part of your budget, you know, as you get those disbursements, that's all in there, as well as a monthly count for that month. It's all out there in those reports.
We've been getting one lump total for some of these coming through, because I understand that they, you know, Nexus manages a lot of that. I was just wondering if we could get the breakdown for that. Because remember, when we first started this, it was Nexus is going to manage, and at the end, they were going to hand all the detail back over. Isn't that?
We will always have, it's in broker, and that's, we will always have access to all of that information in one spot. All of our bids are out there, all of the detail of this is out there, all of that in one spot.
Okay, so we have access to broker, okay?
Okay.
All right.
And move on then to budget enrollment, long-range planning.
All right. Do you want that as a PDF if you wanted us to? Is your PowerPoint here?
If you minimize that, it's on the desktop.
To the right side.
There it is.
Okay. Yeah, we'll flip to the next one. Thanks, Julie. Again, we're --
Do you need a ticker?
We've rehearsed it.
Oh, you've got it.
We're all good.
Okay.
We want, we wanted to start, you know, we've been having ongoing conversations, obviously, about finance, budget. I know every month, we've got a plan for the work session to come forward, talking about enrollment. You know, I think Julie has been talking about, we're always operating in three years, last year, this year, and forecasting next year. And I know that we're kind of at a point where we need to look, we've always been at a point to look beyond next year, but the purpose of tonight is really start engaging the board in a conversation around the parameters of what we should be looking at relative to how we should be projecting student enrollment, what are some of those assumptions around state funding, and then also relative to our post-construction capacity. And so, if you recall, and we'll start going through a little bit this, but, you know, we, as the board, you've talked about short-term enrollment options prior to the construction and referendum, when all of our sites were over capacity to some level. Where now, as, you know, part of the things we've been talking about, we're bringing new classrooms online. We're starting to open up more space in the district incrementally, Wings at the High School, Redtail, Jeffers, and so our capacity is changing because we're adding more space. We're also restoring some of those short-term solutions into, back to their traditional spaces, or in different, so that they're not necessarily used for regular classrooms like we've had in the past, we have shorter space. And so, you know, we have the strategic directions up here, because again, that guides the conversation around how we're going to allocate our resources for students and education. I wish I could have like a little bit along with that little emblem on everything to always keep us coming back there. But again, it is, it is really our, what grounds us in how we make decisions and how we make projections over the next several years, moving forward, in the present and also in the future. So for tonight, we're starting out really with brass tacks at the board meeting, several meetings ago. Again, the topic of open enrollment, enrollment in general, where are we at relative to what we projected last year into this year, and then also looking to the following year. We're starting the process, again, with really getting a deep dive into revenues and expenditures in a budget projection model, the impact of enrollment and open enrollment on the district budget relative to the district's fund balance as well. And then ultimately, as administration, we're looking for parameters. Where we're moving towards is December, regular board meeting, board providing, taking final action on the final budget for 1920, but ultimately, that will bend itself into the parameters moving forward in subsequent school years. And so, a couple of the things that we're going to engage you with the conversation tonight is ultimately, what we're seeking is guidance and perspective from the board on student enrollment projections. So we'll talk a little bit about the projections that we've been using, or the parameters we've been using, seeking parameters on increasing revenues, where are, how are there some ways we can get more revenues coming into the district? And ultimately, too, and I think if you've taken a peek at the board packet, we start to understand that we're going to have to decrease expenditures as well. And so again, providing some parameters. We're not asking for any parameters tonight. Of course, we'll happily take them if the board comes to consensus about moving forward. But tonight, it's about introducing, engaging the board in really discussion, understanding of the information, asking questions. We've got a couple of models here to facilitate the conversation, and then also, too, welcome your feedback, giving us perspective moving forward, so that as a board, you're comfortable taking action on December 9th for that final budget. So our timeline, initial overview, discussion of parameters, will come back again on November 18th. Based on what we hear tonight, we'll come back with parameters embedded, or any possible recommendations from the administrative side you should consider and give us feedback on, continued discussion and refinement of parameters, so that by December 9th, which is similar to what we've done in past years, we're seeking board approval on the 1920 budget, and specifically on open enrollment as well. Over the last several years, open enrollment, the board has taken action at December, and again, we're going to ask the same thing, looking at open enrollment relative to this process. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Oh, all right. Any questions from the board as far as outcomes and parameters and timeline? All right, it's from Bonn.
So what I've done for this discussion is I've taken what the board had approved in June for budget projections and enrollment, and I've kind of used that and made some adjustments for this year. And then I also have some interactive things that I'll bring up later, so we can kind of look at, what does it look like for student enrollment for the future? What does it look like for, how does that affect our revenues and expenditures? And so this is what we had approved, the board had approved for the June preliminary budget. We have total student enrollment of 8,098. And you can see early childhood special ed is at the bottom of additional 68 students. And so that, and those numbers are all included in there. This also does include our ALC students. So it's our total population. We use those numbers for our budget projections. And so, this is what we had projected. We do some projection, we do our projections based on a historical, like, what are my words here? A cohort survival method. And so, we do budget projections based on that, but we also take into consideration birth rates, we take into consideration Hazel Reinhardt's study. There's a lot of different things. We also have talked to the cities, and we try to take all those things into consideration in trying to determine what that budget for enrollment will be for the future. And so those were all taken into consideration with this budget enrollment projection as we move forward. So as you know, we, go ahead, didn't, we did grow this year, but what I'm estimating for final budget enrollment for this year would be 8,800 students plus the 68 early childhood special ed students. We're currently a little over the 8,800 students, but the last couple of years, we declined enrollment throughout the year, and so I projected that will happen again this year. So our budget parameters, based on, you can see in black is the 8,098 students versus the 8,800 students. That's an increase of only 50, even though we have about 112 right now. I'm projecting that decrease throughout the year. And so, based on 50 students, that's about $1.6 million. And that includes the 2% from the state, and then the additional money from 50 additional students. There is also showing a decrease in our special ed revenue. As many of you know, special ed revenue, also part of that component is based on enrollment growth, and so we get more money for the more students that we have, and so I'm estimating that we won't receive as much special ed revenue as anticipated. Aspen transportation revenue, that's that 4.66, the basic formula, when I had originally brought this to the board, that was based on the number of residents' kids in our student district that are attending Aspen, but it's my understanding now that we get it for all of their students, no matter whether they're a resident or not. So that's one point, it's 190,000, so it's about $100,000 more than I estimated. There is still a decrease in title funding. I still anticipate an increase in our interest revenue, and we had an increase in activities revenue as well. So you can see what we had originally projected was $3.9 million, and now we're looking at 2.3. So it's a significant decrease based on that.
Of new revenue.
Of new revenue. So that, instead of it being a $3.9 million in new revenue, it's really, well, see, about 2.3 million. The low is 2.3 million dollars.
And that's anticipating another 50% drop in the increased enrollment from the 107 or 112 that we have right now, down to 50.
Right.
Which has been our trend.
Yeah, Julie, talk a little bit about from the 112 to the 50, historically, what we've seen since over one.
Well, that is, right. So we do have a later slide that kind of shows what our enrollment has done over the last several years. Two years ago, it decreased about 30 kids. Last year, it was almost 50 kids. This is keeping that trend going. If we have more students, that just means we'll have a little bit more revenue at the end of the year than, more than we anticipated. So, but that's what I was projecting the budget on. If you think that's too many, or you want to look at a different number and see what that number looks like, I'd be happy to adjust it to 60 kids or 70 kids, and look at what that number, how it affects our revenue.
If you had to characterize 50 as conservative, meaning closer to a worst-case scenario than a best-case scenario, is that where you would?
I would, I would say it's somewhere between 15 and 60 kids, just what I'm estimating, just based on trends of what we've lost.
I just, I think we'd prefer to be guessing of the high end of them leaving, or if you're the low end of staying, however you want to phrase it.
Remind us, what grade levels do you see most of the?
At the high school level is where we see most of that change.
In previous years, I know that the board is entertaining the idea of like exit interviews, trying to why they're leaving. Have we entertained that all against, and we can learn from why we can't keep them and attract them?
Yeah, we're not currently doing that.
There's a lot of reasons. We do have some that do tell us why they're leaving, and so a lot of them are moving, or they, you know, that's what a lot of, or there may be homeschooling, that, those are the changes that we mainly see.
I would think that there's ways that we could benefit by serving those folks. I mean, we want to, we want to retain those folks, right?
In the high school, I don't, I think there's, I agree, I think in the elementary and middle school, I think that's something that we need to look at, but I will be, say that in the high school, that is the trend across the state, actually, because you have kids who go to live with another parent when they're from split families, you've got kids that do, that drop out, you've got, you know, all sorts of different reasons. High school, they're a lot more mobile, actually. I'm more concerned about our decrease in the elementary and middle school area, because that shows a little bit of a different scenario, a different trend. But, I mean, in my experience across the district, high school is very volatile, particularly 10 through, 10 through 12th grade.
I will say that we do have some kids also that go to care and treatment. We do, we are serving them, when I mean by serving, they're not attending our school. However, we will see the revenue when we look at that as tuition students, so we still get the revenue for those kids, but we also are paying expenditure for their education. So we're paying for their care and treatment at another, at another site.
We do get a lot more that do online, too.
And we do have some that go to online, that is correct. So they'll, to graduate, they may take an online course, or drop out completely and go to an online school.
Right. Yeah, we didn't see that big of a drop this year. We saw a huge increase, another one in ninth grade, a 20-kid increase from 11th to 12th grade and all that. I'm more concerned about the, because we usually balloon in second grade, and we did a little bit this year, but not as much.
What are you looking at, Mary? Just let me all know what you're.
Just the numbers, the numbers that you gave out that I plugged in through the years.
Did we all get that document?
No, I created it. We've never got it.
It's hard to know, have a discussion, have a good discussion when you're looking at a sheet that none of us else, none of the rest of us can see.
I just put the numbers together that were given to us by Julie on the spreadsheet. It's the same one that the newspaper used.
That's great, but we don't, what I'm saying is that if we don't have that document in front of us, which I do not, I can't have a good discussion with you about this.
Okay.
Well, she can still ask the question to Julie, though.
Well, sure. You can't, well, I don't consider my homework to go and redo Julie's numbers into a chart or a spreadsheet. I don't consider that my homework to do. So it's difficult for me to have a good discussion of what you're presenting without seeing it ahead of time. That's all I'm saying.
And that's for the last couple of years.
Obviously you are. I'm not going to wordsmith and argue with you, but, Mary, I can't, I don't know what you're looking at.
Jonathan?
So I think it could be, I'm not sure what you use for methodology, but I certainly think it would be helpful to be able to hear when we are losing students in some way, if we could have an email to parents asking a few questions about why they left, or something like that. And I tend to agree with Mary that when they get to high school, the reasons for changes probably have a lot more to do with the student and their lives than anything that we are doing. At the younger ages, it's, I think it's just curious, because I just, I think we want to be certain that we're, that there isn't some sort of perception somewhere with parents that they're finding something superior. And if they are, I think we would want to find out something.
We will, just, sorry.
That's all right.
We will remember, we will also have in December, a report by Morris Felderman, and one of the questions that they ask, you know, they do the survey, the community survey that they do, is for parents, community members, non-parents, you know, they have a scope of folks. So there are questions in there about, do you choose to attend? If not, why not? So we'll get some updated information, and we'll, we can lay that over, what folks have said in the past as well.
One of the other questions when we're going through the numbers is that Burnsville, Shakopee, New Prague, Jordan, a lot of the areas, and of course, what we heard Jonathan in the MSBA, is that the demographics are changing, and they all look like they're suffering some decrease at this point.
Do you have to remember, we're not decreasing?
Well, no, what I meant is a percentage drop, and, you know, and a lot of the demographic reports that were released did predict this to happen based upon the 30-year birth cycle. Even Hazel said that the chances we do the high K, high migration were, was a high risk. And the county report had us going flat and less by 2025, the one that they did in 2016. So I'm just wondering, how, when we're looking at our numbers, and we didn't increase as much as we thought we were going to or we predicted, have we looked at the trends just outside of our district, or we only looked at this district?
Actually, there's several of those districts that you mentioned, either have gone up more than they expected to go up. I know Eastern Carver County has their kindergarten exploded this year, so.
Lakeville is also anticipating, I think, 1,000 kids in the next six years. Burnsville, we know, is decreasing. Shakopee is very similar to, at least this year, our circumstance, slightly growing.
Slightly, but less than they needed to.
Yeah, right. And I guess that's, yeah, you're kind of, yeah, less than what we needed to, and I think that's kind of where we're at right here, too. So, I mean, less than what we're projecting.
I know, I talked to Jordan, they said they grew more than they expected to. I haven't talked to New Prague, but I know that several of them that you mentioned have grown more than they thought, not by a lot, but I just think it's a semantic word, kids are choosing to move, or.
We'll talk a little bit about, as well, I think, later, what we found from the cities, because we know that things at the cities are slowing down as well. Oh, seven, apparently. So, any other questions on these parameters?
I was just going to say, I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but if you go back to five years ago, when we were projecting over 10 years, we're going to add X number of students, I think we were in 2,500 as our 250 average, we know over a 10-year period, we're not going to have 250 every year. So we're in year five or so of that stretch. Cumulatively, are we at the numbers?
We're close, except for this year, it kind of threw us, but yeah.
But cumulatively, before this, I think we were.
I think it was 2,100. I think the 2017 going out was 2,100 over the next.
I mean, if this is a pause, it doesn't necessarily mean that a year from now, it's, we're not going to be back seeing 150 to 200 students.
I think if I would have said to you in June, or even last March, I predict that we're only going to grow 50 kids, or 100 kids, most of you would have looked at me and said, why do you think that? And I would not have had something that would have said anything that said that we were only going to grow by 100 students, because everything that we saw, even during the cohort survival method, birth rates, all of that, still had us very similar to where we've been in the past. And so that's why, if I would have said that, I think you would have questioned me even more than you are now, saying, you know, like, how did this happen? I think if it was reversed, and I would have said we only would have had 100, we'd have been, why do you think that?
If I could jump on that, too, I think with Hazel's study at the time, we also were coming off a couple of years where I think we had 400 or 300-plus students that came into the district over a year. And so, obviously, at the time, that was not going to be sustainable, at least in anybody's, you know, parameter standpoint, that we should factor in 300 kids or 400 students. And so, that is why we're looking at that higher end of Hazel's, you know, that 250 students a year, you know. However, we know that overall, I mean, that would have been an aggressive pace to take 250 students a year, even from a projection standpoint. So I think, coming back to your question. So I think, coming back to your question, it is the first year where we did not achieve that two-hundred-and-fifty students as we, that's been projected. Which brings us tonight to the pause around, you know, are, is this a one-year blip? Is, is two-hundred-and-fifty students still what we should be anticipating moving forward? And, or should we be thinking something differently? And that's kind of cut into the chase here.
Purpose of the conversation.
For the purpose of the conversation, because, you know, like an ankle, I, I, I don't think we're thinking two-hundred-and-fifty a year.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think Hazel said that either. She, that was based upon high migration too, and that was continued building and all that kinda stuff. So that's not a possible thing. But even if it's a blip, population growth is never linear. It always does this.
Right.
It's a matter of putting the line in between and doing a more rational approach. So that you're not doing the, oh gosh, we grew this, then we dropped, then we did this, then we dropped. You, you, you can't do that, but you also can't assume that you're gonna grow at that high rate. And that was a high risk. What concerns me though is that the county demographic report does say by 2025, eighteen and younger is the lowest or slowest, if not negative, growth demographic we have. Because our, our communities are aging and they're not moving out as quickly, so the houses don't turn. And that's happening not just here, but in a lot of, so in the places that still have room to build, while they can still get low interest rates, they're seeing a little bit of an influx, but that wasn't predicted to stay stable.
I think that's a good point, when you think about long-term, over the next seven years. I, I think this is a time to bring in what we heard from the cities. You know, I think some of the things with the Supreme Court ruling around developers paying for the infrastructure or, you know, I, I think both priorly, Savage for sure, when we met with them, they're seeing a slowdown in the number of houses. However, they're also reaching their, I guess, threshold for build, for having more land for new houses. And we anticipated that a couple of years ago, I mean, just looking at that. We also know that Prior Lake has more land that could be developed. I think what we're hearing is that with this Supreme Court action, until that developer's fee or infrastructure fee is figured out, there might be a slower course of action as we bring on new houses into the community. And so they're, I, they're projecting a little less than what they have in the past from a housing permit. The other part I think that remains to be seen is similar to when the Grainwood apartment building opened up. I think they saw a bump in how existing houses go on the market. And so we saw families coming in. I know there's a few other apartments that are being built in the community. I, I don't know if they're anticipating what impact that would have on current real estate. But having more higher density housing options, you know, might be, that will certainly impact our district and some of our growth. But I think from a housing start standpoint, they're, they're both projecting slowing down.
And that's what I think, and this is a great and a perfect time for the conversation. You know, as I look at our trends and the methodology that we've used, Julie, we were off six students or ten students last year. And I think we can go back to the last, how many years, and we've been spot on. So we're asking a lot of those same questions. Methodology's been solid. And to look to say, is this a one-year? What do we have to do now to adjust? And as we forecast out, having those conversations with the cities, reviewing that data and getting guidance and, and take use from you to move forward.
So this is where as a board?
Can I ask a question? On the revenue side, Julie, on the revenue side, equity, let me, is that? I mean, an increase.
Chief and integration.
Yeah, chief and integration.
That's it. We'll show that in future years. This is still looking at this year.
So, and that's not an option for?
Not for the current year.
Okay.
And I have one more question too. What about pre-K and the tuition? I noticed on some of the graphs, you have that number on there for tuition. Do we, is, is the tuition for non-ESE, ES, early childhood special education and the increase in pre-K and preschool enrollment, is, is that something we're gonna be looking forward to with Edgewood with next year with the extra space?
So early childhood special ed is only for early childhood special ed students. If we have additional students for pre-K, that's all in Fund Four. That has nothing to do with the general fund.
So that doesn't show up here?
And it would not, because that's revenue that we're going through.
Specifically for that.
Yes.
Okay, so that's restricted.
Yep. And so ours is only reflecting early childhood special education. And even though we've had some increased students being tested, it doesn't necessarily reflect in the total number of hours that, that we get, because it's based on the number of hours that we serve them. And so that's why we're kind of seeing a stagnant number in that, that sixty.
So we increased this year. We went up to a hundred and forty ESE, but, but it was normalized down to the lower number because of full-time, some are, it's a part-time thing.
It's based on hours served.
Hours served.
So those hours could be three hours a day for three days a week. And then so it's, how many ever hours that equals is a portion of an ADM.
And we exceeded our estimate for this year, right, for that?
No. We're at sixty-eight. No.
I, I, the numbers that you gave out last year were at seventy-two. So that's, that's okay. That, that adjusted. I'm, I'm looking at the, the enrollment beforehand, so, okay. I guess.
Mary, maybe you wanna talk to Julie separately about that, to get clarification on it, so we can keep moving.
No, it was just the numbers that got released, the updated numbers after October first. And I saw seventy-two on there, but I may have typed it in wrong.
Anything else with the, can always come back to it.
So when we went through, these are the staffing needs that we had requested as part of the budget. We did have a forced teaching staff that we did not hire this year for savings of about two-hundred thousand dollars. We haven't hired all six of those custodial staff yet, so I anticipate that's about a hundred thousand dollar savings. However, that will be in next year's budget then. That additional revenue or expenditure will be there. As you see, everything else is the same, except at the bottom is the negotiation settlement for additional eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. If you wanna flip to the next page.
Oh, I have some questions on that side. So if we take a look here, the first secretary, line number four, one secretary, point eight FTEs for Ola de Lagos, sixty thousand. We've got special ed teaching, three-point-one FTE. And then the point-eight FTE, special ed coordinator, the half-social worker, Ola de Lago, and one FTE, and one FTE technology. And then the forty thousand for another assessment data staff. That's five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of staff.
That the board approved in June.
We approved the HR assistant, one forty-five.
All of these, you approved?
We approved all of them.
All of these were on this budget presentation in June.
The green is just the changes from?
The green is just the changes that were, that we didn't hire from this, or any changes that were made since that time.
And we've hired the ones in the dark, right?
Yep, everything that, yes. And these are the additional, as part of the same budget, these are the additional estimated expenditures. One of the recommendations that I would make for our budget is to utilize our OPEB fund. And so that would be a three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar savings to our general fund if we start utilizing our OPEB Fund Twenty-Five, which we've been levying for these years. But now we could use those funds to pay for those expenditures. And so that would save three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars out of the general fund. So that would be my recommendation. And at some point, the board may wanna look at levying for that again, if that fund gets to be too low. But at this point, you wouldn't necessarily have to.
So, so that money is levy money?
It has been in the past.
Okay.
Is that, is that the max we did?
Eleven million is the maximum liability, a little over eleven million. We have about eight, a little over eight million dollars in that fund right now.
But I meant from an expenditure standpoint on this year.
Yes, that's what it is. That's the actual estimated expenditure for this, for this year.
For this year.
Until January, I have to call myself new guy?
Sure, you can. You can still call it.
OPEB?
Other post-employment benefits.
Thank you.
Sorry, I should've said that earlier.
All these acronyms.
Yes, there's a lot.
Someday before I die, I'll roll them.
So Julie, we've kept that fund in there and we haven't touched it. Is, what are the dangers of touching it, the, the question?
The only thing that is, that we do have a, it could affect our, our rating if we don't, if we don't have those liabilities covered. And right now, we do have the direct liability covered. We don't have the indirect liability. Which means that we have, because we have people who are retired on our health insurance plan, it drives our plan up. There's something called an indirect cost rate that can be charged to this that we don't have covered as part of our liability. We have the actual direct costs covered as, and totally covered, which is why I said we may not have to levy for it any longer. But if we start to decrease this, at some point, the board may wanna say, let's start levying for this again.
Cause those indirect costs, that was like GAZM change rate?
Yes.
That's just a few years ago.
The what?
The GAZM.
Indirect cost has always been there, but.
It was never recognized and now they're wanting us to recognize it, knowing that every single district in the state.
So.
Every single district in the state is underfunded on that. So it's not like it's a, it's like a pie in the sky. But this, I mean, the eight million that we had in there, we were very diligent over the years of putting stuff in there for a while. And then we're advised basically, I mean, they kind of said, you know, slow down, we don't need to.
Right. We, and that's what I said, you have some opportunity here to utilize this to, so that, you know, that you have, this is what it's for.
Yeah, right, I was gonna say this.
This is what it's for.
Right.
It's an opportunity for you to use it, start beginning to use it. It's at three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year, it's gonna take you a little while to deplete it. Even though that number may go up a little bit, and I'll show that a little bit later, it's going up. Because I expect our health insurance costs will go up. So you will see an increase there, or it depends on who retires and what their benefits are that the district needs to pay out.
So if we were to use this, does that affect what we're gonna levy in December?
No. And we've already, the board's already made a decision not to levy for OPEB for this year. And you can't increase a preliminary levy to the final. It can only be decreased.
Melissa?
You had said, going back to the staff make expenditures, Julie, that we're delaying the hiring of the six custodial staff.
Some of them.
Right, some of them. So the board, can we also delay that, the rest of the, almost six-hundred thousand dollars? We can delay that too.
What remaining six-hundred thousand dollars?
The other, the other.
The total of the other positions.
They've all been hired.
They've already all been hired already. But we were able to delay this custodial set.
Only because.
Our spaces are not mine, yeah.
They haven't been open spaces.
Just there's as to where they were.
And the six custodial gym, does that, that, that does or doesn't include for Ola de Lago, the new building?
For Hamilton Ridge and the high school is what we have left.
Okay, so we're good with Grainwood where Ola de Lago is gonna go?
Yep, there's currently staff there.
So you can see, I'm sorry. So you can see our total all expenditures go up about a hundred and five thousand dollars from what we anticipated originally. And this is what our fund balance looks like, based on those projections in the green. Our fund balance goes, it's just almost fifteen percent, it goes down to eleven point one five percent. So again, we still have a fund balance, it's still within our fund balance range at this point. And so the board, for the current year, we're still needing board policy.
Julie, one other question. With the six-hundred thousand that we're taking out of the operating capital for the construction, and we got the extra two-hundred coming out in next year, are we still solid with that number? Or do we think there's gonna be some room there?
Still solid with that number.
Okay.
So part of our referendum, we decided to use some capital money for some projects and that's showing up, coming out of capital dollars.
Do you have a question, Jonathan?
Puzzle look on his face.
Yeah.
Really hard for me to hide. I, I got a really good poker face, don't worry.
I, the reason why, I'd rather have you ask the question so that we.
I just, I just wanna clarify that, kind of, you're, this is not talking about the set aside we did.
No, no, this was originally planned. This is part of the original.
Not the extra money that was.
That's, thank you.
And that's not on the table any longer.
Yeah.
Or currently it's not.
Any questions with?
So this is showing, right, so. I'm actually showing a decrease in estimated expenditures for the three-hundred-and-twenty thousand in here. And that money would show up in our, under expenditures for OPEB. I'm working with our auditors right now to determine what's the best way to account for that. If that's how I'm showing it right now, that may change as a transfer in or something like that. But right now, I'm showing it as not being expended in the general fund. Okay, just to talk a little bit more about enrollment, which is the next slide. And so we kinda put the line delineating the change in the, when the board made the change from open enrollment. So you can see fourteen, fifteen is about the first year that we started to have more students, or it's pretty even, students open enrolling into, open enrolling out. So that was kind of the first year. You can see fifteen, sixteen, the growth we had there's. And each year since then, we still have had quite a bit of growth until the current year. And that's why I said, I think if someone would look this and say, what do you expect to have in nineteen, twenty? I can't imagine that. We would've thought that we would've only had a limited number of students there, fifty. So, but that was at the time when the board made that decision. We had limited space available in our district. And we wanted to make sure that we had room in our schools for our students in the district.
That was that short-term solutions process prior to the referendum and so. Any questions on that? I don't, I don't know if all board members were involved in those conversations. But any questions regarding what you're seeing here?
I think it's clear that, I mean, our enrollment is, like Julie said earlier tonight, are, we're not definitely decreasing. We're definitely increasing internally.
Well, we've been about the same percent for OE even with the limit. Cause it, from, according to the numbers that Julie released to the paper, as well as what the MDE has on their website, we've gone over the seventy-five, but still, before that, we were letting in about a hundred and something, I think. And then we dropped it down to seventy-five, but the other grades, we, a lot of them, we didn't fill.
We haven't gone over the seventy-five. We've only allowed the seventy-five. What you don't see is the number of kids that come in between kindergarten, beginning of October to the end of the year in, in other grade levels. If we have an, it's just like any other grade, if we have kids in early childhood special ed, they are automatically our students.
Right, that, that, there's like five kids or something like that were identified in, in twenty-seventeen and others so many in twenty-eighteen, but we have to take those, that, that's the law.
Right, that is correct.
Yeah, the, the MDE on their website, if you go there, says we took in eighty-seven in twenty-seventeen and all that. That's still a far cry short from the hundred and sixteen that we took in. But even at the one percent of the other grade levels, did we fill all those grade levels? I thought we still had, yeah, okay.
And I believe if you look at the number of students that are either open enrolling out of our district, attending a private school or being homeschooled, that number far exceeds the number of open enrolled students coming into our district. So even with, if you just only are comparing open enrollment to open enrollment or higher, but if you consider all those other pieces, we are, I think that we're not.
Well, we can only control who's in our, who goes to our school here, so we're.
You'll find out a little bit why I'm mentioning that. As we go through this process and we talk about funding, you're gonna, you'll know why I'm mentioning that. But I'll come back to that. As we move forward, just wanna talk about these basic pieces, like what is our capacity now with, after we're done with the construction?
With that line, with the, again, short-term solutions, recognizing we were short or having space in overcrowded facilities. We do have post-construction capacity factored out for our elementaries, as well as middle school, high school. The way that's missing here is bridges, which is a hundred and forty students, whereas before the capacity was a hundred. And so again, we're adding rooms, we're adding capacity and that increase. And again, looking at our average class size, K five at twenty-three, twenty-eight at. looking at our average class size, K five at twenty-three, twenty-eight at middle school, thirty-two at the high school. Secondary, looking at eighty-five percent utilization capacity. There, elementary, you're looking at homeroom capacities and that class size average. So, again, adding capacity at elementary, middle school, high school, that was the outcome of, of the referendum and, and providing space for students.
So, I, I've done a little bit of work, and I have some, some spreadsheets here that we can work through if we, if the board decides to do that. But looking out for the next five years, and this is just, this is a linear, it's just kind of a, a view of a look of what it would look like, it doesn't necessarily mean this is what I think our enrollment's going to be, it's just a model to say, what would it look like if we had a hundred and twenty-five additional students for the next five years and did nothing different with our expenditures? So, at a hundred and twenty-five students a year, because of this year of our revenues not matching our expenditures this one year, it really does put our fund balance significantly in the red here. So, and you can see in the next five years, we would have to make some significant reductions in expenditures in order to bring our fund balance back into line with board policy. And so, if you go to, with, even with the two hundred and fifty additional students, you can see it's not quite such a bad curve, but it still brings us down just about three percent in five years. There are definitely things that the board can do, and options for us, as we go through this process, but this is allowing, somehow, that we have another two hundred and fifty students. Now, granted, this is a linear look at that, and we'll look at what enrollment will be, or what the board would like us to look at for different options for enrollment. And same with expenditures, we do, I'm gonna go over here and do a little bit of...
Julie, can you, when you have a moment, can you talk a little bit, besides the two fifty and one twenty-five, what are the parameters that you're building into?
So we're looking at two percent on the formula, which, that's just an, you know, we could look at one percent, we can look at two percent, we can look at one and a half. Right now, two percent is what we have had over the past several years.
From the state.
From the state, and that's on our basic formula. And as you know, the basic formula is only about sixty thousand, sixty million dollars of our budget. So when we get two percent, it's only on that piece of the two percent, it's on that piece of it. So even though our budget, our revenue budget's about a hundred million dollars, we're not getting two percent on a hundred million dollars, we're just getting two percent on the basic formula. And then we're also looking at about ten thousand dollars a year per student, so an additional revenue. So if we had another hundred, two hundred and fifty students, it's two point five million dollars. So we're just kind of rounding that to ten, ten thousand dollars per student. And that number would go up as the basic formula goes up and those kinds of things. But just as a quick look at how enrollment affects our district, how the two percent affects it, if we only got one percent, we can throw that number out there if the board wants to look at any of those things. What does making reductions in expenditures look like, and how much would we want to look at, at different levels, if you wanted to do something like that?
So this also factors in continuing with seventy-five kindergarten students and one percent at open enrollment? Or is it that factored into the one twenty-five and two fifty?
Right, it's already factored in, so we would need that kind of revenue. So, so, this is what you just looked at here. A little difficult, but, you know, estimated enrollment at eighty-eight hundred students, which is fifty additional. The formula, and within formula enrollment is one point six three eight. And you can see those changes in the Aspen and the special ed. But if I go into twenty twenty-one, we could actually do a little bit of work and say, what is it if it's one percent? On here, we have additional achievement and integration revenue. The board has approved a preliminary levy with another three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in achievement and integration. And so if we looked at that and how we could supplant some money from the general fund for that and add some additional expenditures, we know next year, we have some additional busing costs as part of the whole, opening up another elementary school. Wage increases, additional custodial costs, utility, supply budgets for Hamilton Ridge Elementary, those other increased costs that we know we'll have next year for opening those new buildings. And then you can see the other revenue, I mean, if we, and I did this and said no new staffing for next year, simply because we've hired staffing this year for students that didn't come. And so if we said we didn't have any new staffing, this is just kind of a look and see what would this look like. I put that weighted A D M down here, and I did that for each of the next three years going forward, the same kind of thing. And as we move forward into these years, if we look even at twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, using those same, you can see our revenue still, it does start to exceed our expenditures. But we can't overcome this year where we've overspent as much as we have. Our expenditures are so high over our revenues. So, at two hundred and fifty new students, we can get there where our revenues, again, are, are higher than our expenses. And as we move forward, when we get to that, which is where we... So it looks like that. We could do some, and said, what if we cut a million dollars each of these years? And you can see this fund balance change. If we had more students, what did that look like? If we added more than two hundred and fifty, it's up to the board how they want to...
And that's the parameters that we're seeking tonight, is, as we look at this, again, are we thinking two hundred and fifty students a year? Number one, giving conversation or feedback on that. I think number two, really is opening that conversation around open enrollment. Is, are we, as a board, is that still the right approach for seventy-five students at kindergarten and one percent at each of the grade levels? Knowing that we have additional capacity until our resident students move in and we use open enrollment as a management tool and, and use that as a year-by-year conversation? Is two percent from the state, is that where we feel comfortable with as we build these projections? That's the, that's the direction we're seeking.
Can you go back to that last slide? For clarification, then, that's assuming that we're getting two hundred and fifty students a year and we're making some cuts at a million dollars for...
No, this is no cuts.
But our fund balance is down about three percent.
Three percent.
So well below our policy.
Right.
In five years.
Could you, could you show us?
She's saying we can manipulate it, so that's what she's saying, so you can manipulate and watch the line go.
Right, that's what I was just gonna ask. Can you put, I don't know, we talked earlier about a million dollars in cuts this year, or...
Right, if I, well, not that, well, it depends on where you, where you want to try and make them. If we put it in next year, a million dollars of cuts, if you wanted to see what that does. Twenty-one, twenty-two. So if you look, makes quite a bit of difference here on our fund balance chart. You know, we have a lot of variables right now that are happening in our district with opening new buildings and with student enrollment. So as far as expenditures, I have the expenditures out there for opening those new buildings, but we haven't actually realized, what will it really, what will it really be? And so to make some extreme cuts at this point, not knowing what those expenditures will be, may be premature. So trying to make two million dollars of cuts right away may be too quick, but maybe that's where the board wants to go and say, no, we want to make sure that that happens now. But we do have some unknowns, that we're making our best estimates based on expenditures that we have in other buildings of the same size and square foot, and using those same utility costs for other buildings. And adding utility costs for the high school at the same square, you know, price per square foot at the, that we're currently expending.
We hired staff for an increase of two hundred and fifty students, which we don't have. So we have some staff that we can be looking at, not that I want to, but...
It's possible, we would definitely, I think all things are on the table.
But, well, I think everything has to be on the table for this.
You know, question, you know, we hired already those extra folks on slide number four there. We hired them in September.
So those staff were as part of the referendum that we, the board, as part of the two hundred and fifty dollars per pupil unit, those were all staff that were discussed to be hired as part of that operating referendum. We hire staff for classroom staffing based on enrollment. So when we see another two hundred and fifty students, or we're anticipating another two hundred and fifty students, we're hiring staff at those levels that we think that we're going to see those students arrive. And so if we don't have the students and we're hiring staff for students, that's where that may be something we want to look at. The other staff that we hired were part of our referendum, the only thing we did is we hired them a year early. You know, when we originally looked at those, those came to be hired next year, but we have so many things happening, we knew we would have so many things happening this year, that that was the recommendation, that they be hired early.
I was looking back at the numbers again here, and I'm just comparing, just for the secondary, post-secondary, my post-secondary, secondary, seventh through twelfth grade. Currently, going by your numbers, it looks like we have right now forty-two, forty-seven, number of students, four thousand two hundred and forty-seven. And on the capacity, the post-construction capacity slide, for middle school and high school, that's fifty-eight, seventy-five. So it leaves room for only sixteen, twenty-eight, number of students, right?
Additional.
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 So even if we had a hundred and fifty students at the grade seven through twelve, over the next, we're not, we'll have plenty of space for those.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if you had a hundred students...
I mean, that, that's, that's for our internal growth, I mean, that's the, the people that move in here in second grade.
We need to do a proper capacity plan, and we should have done that years ago, we really need to do that.
Melissa, were you finished? Well, what I'm getting at is the need for a capacity plan, to be able to justify, I mean, we've got hundreds of families that are getting relocated out of their neighborhood school now as a decision that we made two or three months ago, and we're going to be opening the gates for another seventy-five or a hundred, or however many other students that are gonna come in now, if the board decides to continue to have that level of open enrollment. I mean, where are they going? Are they gonna be, like Jeffers Pond, for instance, are they gonna be filling back at Jeffers Pond? Where are we gonna put these students? That's an uneasy thought for these families. If we, as a board, decide to keep the gates open, when we know that we have internal growth, we know that we have Jeffers Land that is ready, you know, ready to be sold, and lots of other land, you know, we're not a Burnsville or a Savage.
I think the one thing to look at is, I'll go back to the previous slide. The reason why we had conversations about restricting open enrollment, because we didn't have space internally, and we knew that we'd have more resident students coming into the district, which resulted in really the, the board conversation around coming to seventy-five kindergarten students and one percent at each of the grade levels. Prior to that, we had no... Prior to that, we had restriction at open enrollment at the high school.
And Red Tail Ridge.
And Red Tail Ridge. And so, again, having space for our resident students, I think our projections as a community, you're pointing some things out, there's some land in the district that can be developed. I think it comes down to when that will be developed, I think, not if it's if, I think it will sell. I think there will be some, some additional, but perhaps, coming back to how we started this conversation, maybe this fifty students this year is just a blip, and maybe we're back to plus three hundred or four hundred. I don't know, I think I'd be pleasantly surprised if that was the case. But we do have space for our resident students, and we're going through the process of resident students, resident in district transfers, and then current assignments of open enrolled students, our Lakers, that are currently in the school district. So they'll all have a place in Prairie Lake Savagery schools. The question is, we're gonna have, until our resident enrollment catches up, which is based on our projections, we're gonna have additional space. And I think that's the, that's the exercise we're going through, is if you're looking for additional revenue from a, having more students come in because we will have the space, that is a possibility as a board that you could be discussing. I know, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe restrictions on open enrollment were due to lack of space. What we're saying is with additional space relative to our current enrollment, we've got a bubble, we've got a gap until our resident students fill our spaces. So what does that look like? And if it's still seventy-five and one percent, then that's the charge that we would take forward from the board, but if it's something different, I think that's what we'd like the board to have a conversation about.
I don't think personally that, 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 well, first of all, the seventy-five are not seventy-five right now with the extra space. Again, I've said this for the last three years, I'll say it again. I'd like to see a per-grade capacity plan, because we grow in different rates. We grow with kids in mid elementary, and then we front-load kindergarten, then we have a resource, and we gotta move people. I'd like to see that per-grade capacity plan, not only that, but also for resource planning for staff. And to show, so we have that cohort and we can follow it. That is industry standard here, and I think that, I, I would feel much more comfortable doing that before deciding on anything, because that pretty much also determines what you can accept in, in each grade level, because that's where they're coming in.
So you're looking at a grade level capacity?
Right, so if we have so much kindergarten space and we've got room for a hundred and fifty kids, and, and, but, we gotta look at first grade too. So if we bubble in first and second grade and we know that's gonna come up, we need to plan for that. Now, we may be under for some time, that's fine, but at least we know what those thresholds are, and we can manage that cohort from kindergarten through twelfth grade.
So in total capacity, you're looking more grant, what you're suggesting is more granularly to say, this is the total number of district enrollment at kindergarten, first grade,
Correct.
second grade, third grade.
That is standard, that is the, so that way, when you, when you measure it coming into the next year, let's say if we get, if we open up and we say, okay, we can accept a hundred and fifty kids at kindergarten, if we have a hundred and fifty that apply, we can also then say, these guys are gonna move into first grade, do we have enough space for that? And therefore, then we say, okay, at first grade, we can open up at one percent, at ten, at thirty, whatever it may be. So we manage it proactively going forward. So one of the things that we're doing right now, we wanted to wait until the electoral one numbers came into, but we'll be re-rolling kids into, right, the new boundaries, and then being able, as Jeff said, to look at, you know, current Lakers, taking a look at of, of exactly what that is moving forward for next year, is what's the capacity that at each building, and then we'll model that out.
Okay, not at each building, see that's been...
Each grade level.
Grade level.
Yep, yep.
Grade levels as a whole and then buildings.
And that's exactly what we have to do to determine staffing needs at each building, and so that's exactly where we are in the process, just so you know.
That would be very helpful, because, I mean, obviously, I've had kids that have open enrolled in this district, and I've had kids that have open enrolled outside of this district, and are very familiar with the process with about four or five different school districts, and I haven't seen it done anywhere, way in here. And quite frankly, it helps, because that way, the board can act very proactively, coming, as soon as those numbers come in. They can, they know, and it's not waiting to figure out who signs up and where we're gonna put them and all that kind of stuff. It also helps us understand the deficits at, at a grade level and how that's going to project out over multiple years if we end up with the attrition rate or the growth rate and the bumps that we usually do. Because we do, we, I mean, everything that I'm seeing is, and you guys pointed it out to me a long time ago, that we don't, we're a more mature housing district because of pricing, so we tend to see those bubbles happen at different times, and then...
We see bumps at sixth grade and ninth grade.
Well, also in mid elementary, we don't, we tend to grow more in like the middle elementary than we do in the kindergarten without open enrollment.
Well, the only place I really notice our growth is at first grade, when we see kids coming from primaries to the elementary.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing it in first and second grade, and then it flattens out until you get into that whole junior high, and then the bump in ninth grade. And every so often, we've seen a bump in eleventh grade.
And every so often, we've seen a bump in eleventh grade.
That's mainly due to ALC though.
Okay.
So you're looking, what you're, what you're requesting is that from the board, what you'd like this for the eighteenth to prepare a grade level?
Well, we kind of did that already with, sure, with October, I mean, with September.
This is current, so, so.
Oh, the current, you're saying.
Julie provided current numbers after exactly, exactly to that, by school, by grade level.
So then you're going to project out where everyone's going or whatever, and then figure out, like, where.
We offer next year.
And then projecting capacity.
Capacity by grade.
By grade.
By grade.
We already have it by building, so by grade.
Yep.
But then, the parameter, would the assumptions that we use be the current open enrollment, open enrollment parameters that you've set?
Well, if we set a capacity by grade with the average number of students, then your number of open enrolled you can get in is going to come naturally, right?
It's going to come naturally. It's like if there's four hundred kids at this grade, and we only have three fifty, then this, this grade's going to sweat fifty. That's what you're saying, that's what you're saying. So you maintain the staffing and maintain. So we, but we know that based on what's here, we just add the numbers across, we know what we have.
That's what current, right.
But we know what we have.
She's talking about projecting.
Right, right. We know what we have if we do that, and then we can project as to where we want to be.
And, and the current doesn't include the new space either, that'll come on the Hamilton Ridge, which will help.
Right, it did, this is current buildings, we need to roll them into, like, it's that easy.
Well, in the high school, the number of kids at the high school, I mean, because of all those classrooms coming on mid-year. I mean, I guess, I'll just come out, what I'm thinking, um, I do think it needs to be a combination. I'd like to see cuts, I mean, looking at some budgetary cuts that, of, um, of some sort. I mean, you know, a million, million and a half, I, that's just off the top of my head, I mean, I think.
I think what this allows us to do as a district is to kind of look and do a reset. And say, what is, what are, where are we spending funds, what's the most effective way to do that?
We haven't done that in a while, so I think, I mean, this is probably a great time and opportunity to take advantage of that. And I, so, in my mind, I for sure think you have to look at expenses first. And then managing the growth, I mean, with what Mary's suggesting, that may become more natural as, you know, as we see the trends of something that we can see on a regular basis of, hey, this makes sense to add this amount of kids. We're not creating bubbles, we're not, you know, there's that consistency. So to have some type of combination, to me, makes sense.
And I assume that if we do it by grade and we'll do it, you said the average of K through five would be twenty-three. Obviously, there's going to be ups and downs a little bit in there, but if we use that as a major guideline. We have so many classrooms that'll be opening up, we can fit so many on our ideal, and we, if we go below that, then.
You're talking twenty-three students in a class?
Right, whatever, I mean, whatever the number was.
Yeah, I think that would be more primary, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, upper grades are a little higher, lower, kindergarten is lower than that typically, so.
Yep.
Okay. So you're looking at that for elementary, middle school, high school, are you, are you, is that the right approach with those, with the teaching stations relative to number of students?
What I, what I've seen before is that ninth grade stays, but, but tenth, eleventh, and twelfth get bolted.
Get what?
Well, they get, they get aggregated, because it's, there's a little bit more.
There's so much food.
Right, well, you have, you have electives, and that's part of their required credit. So what I'm asking is, we're looking at post-construction capacity. Is the information we have here appropriate for us to move forward with? I understand what you're asking for.
For the elementary.
For elementary, but is that the same for middle school and high school?
Through ninth grade is what I would prefer, if it's, if it's possible to do a per-grade capacity.
Through ninth grade.
Yeah, tenth, not tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, just.
And I would disagree, I think it's, I think after fifth grade, that all changes. Because the kids are at different, different levels, different classes, they're overlapping with different people. I don't think we can hold it to a certain number at a grade level after fifth grade. There's too many variables after that.
I tend to disagree with that from an educational standpoint, just because you do have specific things that go in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that, that, that are for staffing and, and all sorts of stuff. That's a little bit more predictable, but I would say after ninth grade.
Yes.
It, it's, it's not, it's not, but I, I've seen it done very successfully at the middle school, and I.
And you know what?
I think we can have, I think we can have parameters on how many kids, but I, I don't think we can hold it fast to that, because there are seventh graders that are taking ninth grade classes, and ninth graders taking twelfth grade classes, or whatever. So there's a lot of variables.
We also have elective classes that have forty students in it. You know, if you have band, choir, you know, and then we start to aggregate it down a lot differently. It becomes, uh, it becomes a much more difficult prospect. And I'm not certain, what I'm trying to say, I'm not certain I would have the time, or we would have the time, to turn that around.
Well, we already have those numbers for sixth, seventh, and eighth, that's, that's.
For stu, for.
Oh, yeah, for capacity, because we've been collecting them for a while.
So this, so this is appropriate then, is what I'm asking.
Right, it's appropriate, but definitely includes sixth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. We already have them, that's not extra work. I mean, you've been giving us that, it's.
But not the grade.
But the long.
But we only have two middle schools, we've got the totals by middle school and by grade already. You know, we know how much capacity is at each middle school, so it's just a matter of division at that, at that point. For the staffing point, you already know how many sixth graders, how many seventh graders, and how many eighth graders you have. So to me, that's, the, the middle school, I want to keep the, you know, whatever it is, understand the net capacity with the new, with the new space.
So are we looking at an average of twenty-eight students per those classrooms?
Yes, if that's, yeah.
Okay.
I would maintain our criteria, although, I mean, you know, we don't want to see class sizes increase, right? I mean, that, unless we have to.
So elementary is still becoming more granular when we're thinking about kindergarten, primary, intermediate.
For sure.
But for middle school, we're looking at an average class size of twenty-eight relative to capacity, and then the high school, thirty-two students relative to capacity.
I'm more comfortable with that. Question on utilization, again.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Can I, can we get some direction on, on this part before we go?
Of how much detail are you saying?
Right, I, I like.
Are we saying K through five, are we saying K through eight, are we saying K through nine?
Correct.
What are we saying?
So what I'm hearing is K through five, you're going to be able to, by building, by, by grade and capacity. Middle school, really what we're saying is, we've got a hundred and fourteen classrooms. We, we have twenty-eight students in each one. So that's, yeah, so that's relatively easy math. And then, again, kind of the same thing at the high school.
Yes.
You're right, that, what I'm hearing everybody's asking for is the granular at the elementary level.
For how many years, modeling for how many?
I mean, I, I think then.
Seventy-two?
Hey, here's the thing, if we have a capacity plan, we're not adding more space.
Right, I mean, that's based on, you're right, the statement on.
I was going to say, that would be the easiest right now, because then we can, I think the next conversation is, what is the decision around open enrollment or other things?
Exactly.
I think if you can get it, I don't know how much it is, but I'm just going to say to the end of our chart, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five?
But based on what?
But it's not going to change. I mean, if our capacity is our capacity, it's not going to change.
Yeah, capacity's going to be the same.
Right, but the growth, like she's saying numbers, you have to give her parameters.
So, yeah, well, I would say once we get those classrooms down by grade, then that's the conversation to say, where do we have capacity and how much.
Based upon.
And essentially, what we have here is, we have four-section schools and five-section schools. And so some of the schools that are large, I mean, when we're looking at, for example, Five Hogs, we're looking at four, largely, we're not looking at four, three, five, we're looking at building consistent sections, so that's, we can pull that out.
Right.
You know, Hamilton Ridge is built as a five-section school, five kindergarten sections all the way up to five fifth-grade sections. So, you know, I think what, what we would look at is, we probably would look at kindergarten averages a little less than twenty-three. Second and third grade probably at twenty-three, fourth and fifth grade perhaps at twenty-six, twenty-seven, in order to identify that capacity relative to the, yep.
And you know, I've got, you, you handed out those numbers my first year on the board, uh, far as number of sections and all that kind of stuff, when we're looking at all the decisions we had because of the overcrowding that we had in the higher capacity and closing art rooms and stuff like that. So you, you, you know, I know that some of the walls moved and the cafeteria and Redtail Ridge is no longer needing to be used and stuff like that, but, um, I would assume that those, you're just adding in the extra classrooms we put in.
Well, some of those, some of those spaces that were used for our short term went back to original spaces.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we have the original numbers, we have, so those, those numbers are already there. And remember, we played with utilization rate, and my question was, again, tell us why we only have eighty-five percent utilization rate on them?
So eighty-five percent utilization rate is basically, where as a teacher, I'm teaching five out of the six sections a day, and I'm, and I'm also in that classroom for my prep time. So if you're above eighty-five percent, I would have another teacher that would come in to teach that in that classroom, and I would have to leave in order to conduct my prep time.
That makes sense.
So that's why it's an eighty-five percent utilization. So right now, you know, prior to adding all of the additional space.
We've done that, but I mean, it's not something features. It's not ideal, but, I mean.
Well, and what we're, I, what we're projecting here is our ideal capacity.
Yeah.
At eighty-five percent utilization. So as a board in the district, we can always go above that, but I think then there's an indicator there that we're getting close to needing more space as a district.
So then we would point to closing open enrollment.
Or building new space.
Well, I mean, you, you can't make that decision until we have the numbers.
Right.
That's where the seesaw happens.
Yeah.
You know, because there are people in our community that say, we've been on that seesaw.
But there's a seesaw financially as well.
Or is the seesaw about we're full and going back and forth?
There's a seesaw financially, and this is the thing too, with, right now, you have open enrollment to help you with that. If we don't have that and we make cuts, but now you make program cuts, and you do all those things where people don't want to attend school here, now you have a downward spiral the other way. And so the only thing you do is go back to your community and ask for more operating referendum. And that's the thing that you are avoiding doing by having more open enrolled students. So there is this seesaw there as well.
There's the community, members of the community, they're saying, yeah, we've been on this spiral going the other way. And that, that the district is perpetuating that. What do you say to that? Because if we clamp down on open enrollment, we maintain what we have, we maybe do some cuts, we live within our means.
We would make cuts every year. We would make cuts every year.
And we would, but we wouldn't be growing this bubble.
Can I, can I, I mean, I, I really, I really think the, 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 the conversation should be about capacity, and open enrollment is part of the capacity. Yeah, um, but here, you know, in, the reality of the situation is, is, you know, when I, when I first got on the board, I mean, there was a graph like that that said if we don't accept at least, I can't remember how many open enrolled kids, we're going to have to close out El Allo de Lago, cut staff, the whole bit. That wasn't true either, so we need to look at this from a numbers perspective and a capacity perspective. OE should fill in the gaps when we can accept them for capacity, but the same danger occurs of, you know, if you overcrowd the classrooms and you stress out your teachers, you know, you lessen the individualized learning of the students, et cetera, you have the same effect too, where people start to leave, or it, it becomes a non-desirable place, you know, you have, so it, it can go either way. If we have that capacity planning going forward, at least we have the information to know when we should, you know, add OE, add staff, you know, stuff like that going forward, and we can make the decision of whether if the gap can't be made up by, by the demographics and our, and our, and our attractiveness to, you know, our, you know, to other students, then we go and we love here, we do what we need to do, or we cut costs. But I, I kind of feel like in the past, past few years, we've been kind of, without that capacity planning aspect, we've been kind of operating blind.
Well, the last few years, we didn't have the space to do very much with. So having this discussion now, I think is, I think this discussion is very productive in that now we have the option to do something like that. We, our hands were tied for the last couple of years. So now it's a good time, because we're going to have the space to figure out what our capacities are, where we have space for open enroll, where we say, no, we can't, we don't want to crowd. You referred to crowding kids, none of us, I don't think, want to crowd classrooms, and I, I think, I don't think you do either, but.
And to Julie's point, sorry, to Julie's point earlier, it's only been in the last five, Julie, six years where we've had a net gain in terms of open enrollment. Otherwise, we were, we, we were in a net loss at open enrollment.
And that's something that we can only control to a certain degree, we can only work at what we have. And those numbers, you know, they're all over the board, actually. When I go to the MDE and I ask for those numbers, they're less than what you guys say, and they're all over the board. The point is, is that what do we do with what we have, and what we're, what we're getting, and how do we manage within those means? Because let's face it, one of the reasons why, why we were overcrowded to begin with is because we did let more kids in than we needed to even legally. So if we had a capacity.
We had, we had the space, Mary, I mean, that's, that's, we, we were net losers up until, if you remember that chart, we were net losers, so if we hadn't, we would have lost that.
You're saying we didn't have the space.
Right.
Okay, well, wait.
We didn't have the space, you just said we did have the space.
Whether, whether people come or go, I mean, we only have so much space in a classroom, it doesn't matter how many kids leave our district, we only have so much space in the classroom. Okay, so bringing the argument of how many kids, you know, were, were left or went to private school or went to Aspen instead of us or something like that, it doesn't change the fact that we only had so much space. We have to manage what we have. And so, um, that, that argument doesn't, doesn't really meet what, what we did. So we just want to move forward and make sure we know, and I personally would like to see that capacity plan, so I'm glad we're all on the same page.
Kind of, Jonathan's been waiting.
I'm next.
It's a pet peeve of mine, where we spend a lot of time disagreeing about what's happened in the past. It's really, it should inform our decisions going into the future, each of us and our perspectives. But if we have different perspectives on it, I don't think there's anything productive about talking about why my perspective is different than yours. So from this spot, I think about how should this inform us going forward? I think there's a lot of good perspective and good discussion at the table. Melissa is right that inevitably, there can be a pattern of up and, 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 and that balance is what I think with, with the plan we're talking about, with having the numbers in front of us on an annual basis, and being able to see where we have space and where we could grow. It's an exercise that you should have to only do once to create it, and then it's adding the numbers in each year. I really think instead of looking at a big, can we add one hundred and seventy-eight OE students, it is going to be, we've got space here, space here, space here, space here, space here, and adding it up. And it can be done in a way that I think is, um, efficient, and it's going to be a responsible use of our facilities without putting an undue burden on our resident taxpayers, and I think that's our job. So I, I appreciate Jeff's willingness to put it together, appreciate Mary's persistence in requesting it, and I think it will help all of us better make decisions and have better informed decisions going forward, because that's what we've been put here to do.
I'm just going to make one final point, I think we have to move on, but just, I wanted to put up this graph, because to be honest, Julie, you can confirm this. This is not unique to any most districts in the state. Every district in the state who's not growing at a fairly aggressive rate is facing the same issue. And it comes to the funding of students, the underfunding of education in general. When we get a small percentage or, you know, less than two percent each year, and we have to meet our contractual negotiations, it's, it's under, we're underfunding education as a state. So you're either right now growing and maintaining your revenues, or you're not growing and you're cutting, or you're trying to maintain, it, it continually goes down. So I don't think there's very many districts in the state that don't have a chart that looks just like this. So it's not like it's unique. So, but I, I do think that's why open enrollment, and there are, you know, things with between cutting expenditures and using open enrollment as a tool to try to maintain and get that line a little less downdrift, so. But I was going to ask from a parameter standpoint, what other parameters besides the capacity plan do we need to give you?
What do you want us to?
Are you clear with the capacity plan?
So here's what I have, we're looking, um, number of cla, uh, secondary, we're looking number of classrooms, with the, keeping the average consistent, twenty-eight at the middle school, thirty-two at the high school. We're looking at breaking down at each site, the number of classroom section, elementary by grade level by building, relative and. Um, we're looking at breaking down at each site, the number of classroom section, elementary by grade level by building relative and I'm gonna put out there, you know, for, for K one, twenty students, second through three, twenty-three student average. Um, and four, five, twenty-six to twenty-seven average. And we'll use that as a, as our, kind of our approach. Um, again, from a capacity, again, you bump those numbers of students up in any of these averages, you're gonna get more, you know. But I think if we, if I can at least go with that, that would make some sense. Um, I'm hearing combination of looking at growth projections and reductions in expenditures. From Stacy.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, two hundred and fifty cents a year is what we should be. I mean, I'll put that out there. It doesn't, I don't know if we should be.
Seems high to me.
Seems high for this little bit here, but I mean.
But we do agree, or do we all agree that we need to probably look at both?
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Look at our spending and looking at ways to increase our revenue.
I think it's a good time.
Which the main way to do that is.
So you're looking for administrators to come back, us to come back with scenarios and some recommendations to consider or processes.
And I like, I like seeing the impact of the different options. Kind of visual.
Hey, Jeff, on that other slide where you have the post-construction elementary capacity, that's, that's there now, right? That's post.
That's not totally there yet. That will be post-construction. So, you know, as you heard earlier.
What about those numbers aren't gonna change? The six twenty-one for five clocks, that's, that's there. Fall, fall twenty, twenty-one. And is that with?
So the total number of fall classrooms and special ed space is there. The twenty-nine to thirty, that, yes.
Okay, and that includes the eighty-five percent utilization?
So for elementary, we consider that to be a hundred percent because a homeroom teacher at the elementary is in their classroom all day long.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So we don't have classes going in and out.
Okay.
It's, it's a secondary phenomena that they're going for.
Got it.
Eighty-five percent. Okay? So you're, you're not asking, I want to be really clear. Usually our, our, if we're looking at reductions in expenditures, we don't come back with the answers. We typically come back with process, you know, as far as what we're looking for in expenditures relative to enrollment. You're not looking for a list of here's the top ten things we're gonna cut.
No.
Okay.
But I think we should look at the impact of numbers. Impact of numbers of amounts.
Amounts.
Of what it is, because I would imagine that's gonna take a little while to go through a process that's been cut.
Okay.
So you're asking just to know how much we'd need to cut to make it work the way we want it to?
Right.
Without anything specific as to what would get cut.
Correct.
Correct.
I guess I'd be curious though.
What?
Right. I would be curious to know what areas you're looking at that we could cut.
Well, then if we say yes to that, are they held to that? I mean, I think there needs to be a process. There needs to be.
Absolutely, but I think that, you know, what are some areas we could cut? What do we have that maybe is, we could do without right now?
I guess.
Well, but that's putting something out there that I.
We're not voting on anything, Stacy, but it'd be nice to know what areas we're looking at. I, I personally would.
I would think you'd look at everything.
Yeah.
Well, but they're gonna say some, look at everything, but there may be some areas that, you know, make more sense to cut.
But that wouldn't come out of a process.
We can increase our attendance at our meetings if we need some potential targets.
I, I think what we'll start with on the eighteenth relative to the budget is amounts.
You know what, I'm supporting Stacy's thing and we just consider everything soup to amounts.
Yeah, well, I think we have to. But there's a process that has to happen. So if you go out there in public and you say, oh, we're thinking about, okay, I'm just gonna say this, this is totally not true. I don't think, obviously, but ban or something. I mean, you throw something out there, that's putting a target on something.
Well, tonight they're having a concert.
I realize that. That's not what we would do, but I'm just saying, that puts it out there. That it alarms.
I'm not, I'm not calling that specific here.
So we're hearing more about the amounts. We know that we, you will expect us to be looking at everything right now for November eighteenth. The next time that we come together and talk about this, we'll look at different scenarios and amounts. What it would mean to reduce X and to with X number of staff.
I mean, and I think, I would think the most. Our students. We would agree on this, that we obviously would want, if, if there were gonna be reductions, those reductions would, we would protect the student. Number one, you know what I mean, in their experience as much as we can.
Absolutely.
Yes. So I mean, with that as a parameter.
All I'm saying is that if, I don't want to go to anything specific, no programs, no anything. It's like, are we looking at possibly that we've got some staff that we might need to look at? I guess I would like to know that, if that's what we're looking at, because that makes, can make a difference in how I feel about where we're cutting.
Whether we do a million or a million and a half. But they're not holding you to that.
No, not holding to anything.
Do you have any other, um, perspective on this scenario? I'm not hearing.
The two fifty, you mean?
Yeah, I'm not hearing anyone say two fifty is the scenario.
What I heard earlier for you said, Jeff, you said having that two fifty number year after year would be very unusual.
That was relative to when Hazel finished the demographic report. Just giving a perspective of at the time, we were coming off two years of extremely high growth and I think two fifty, if some of those trends would have held. I mean, we have had two fifty each over the last several years. So I mean, this is the first year we've not achieved that two fifty.
She did say that we'd be trending down.
But I mean, like when we had the recession, right after I got on the board, it was like sixty kids. I mean, it was, I mean, so that two fifty is looking at the twenty years, what happened over twenty years and divide it basically by, I mean, so there is up and down. I mean, that, that's.
And, and again, the high migration is, is totally dependent on the economy, as she said.
Right.
As well as available space, which we are less and less now, so you can't depend on that. And then, and then the economy depends on housing turns and a lot of other things as well as the birth cycle. So there's a lot of factors that went in there and we did go to the utmost high.
Well, she also said too, not to use the demographic study for projection purposes.
Right.
So I, you know, there, I mean, I guess that's sort of a get out of jail free card.
It's one of the things, as I spoke to, one of the things that the model looks at.
Yeah.
The major thing is the survival cohort method, which is how many kids go from first grade to second grade and what has been that growth to historical growth trend. And you can weight it, how many years passed? If we wait it and use it for next year and wait this year as our highest weight for that, our growth will be very small for next year, anticipated to be smaller next year.
The, the, okay, so we need to look at all scenarios. I do have one question about the cuts. Um, I, I sent you an email and I, and I just kind of said, if we start to cut or look at it and it affects our strategic plan, can we somehow or another know that impact? So programs or something like that that's in a purple or whatever on our plan that we know if that's something that. The purple green work? Right. If, if, that would be something that at a high level, I know that we're not gonna be able to get granular on that. If we know we're gonna have to maybe adjust that, take a program out or something, that would be. I would imagine if we do like a scenario cuts, you're gonna be listing out, I mean, not.
Right, and I can tell you right now, between now and November eighteenth.
You're not gonna.
No, we're gonna look at the numbers and the budgets so that we can get to a place where you provide us guidance on if we have to make reductions, if that's the direction we go, how much are those reductions? But to your point, and that was the first slide Julie had, was our priority work. I'm hearing you say, if anything was reduced, decisions down the road are brought to you for recommendation, what would be the impact of that?
Right, that's, um, just from a, from a communication, from a planning, the whole bit. I, and I know that that's, that's, it would be incredibly high level. But it's something that I think that because we all discuss that, that is our strategic plan, it would be nice to know if, if any of those were needed, we moved out or in jeopardy.
And again, probably not within the eighteen.
No, not within the eighteen.
Yes, but as part of the process, yes. Okay, just want to be sure.
So here, here's another fine component that we just need to clarify.
Two and two? From the state, two and two?
Well, that's the component. What would you like to do with the, what do you expect from?
Yeah.
It's a requirement.
Leave it at two and two, because that's what we have until it's zero and zero. I mean, that, I mean.
Well, I'm just saying.
We need, yeah, the baseline of two and two would be fine with me.
I'm fine with that too.
That's the best we're gonna get.
Well, that was your consensus. I appreciate how quickly you came to consensus on that. Um, I think, I want, just a clarification. I'm sorry to harp on this. I just want to make sure we have the, the best scenarios coming back on the eighteenth is, you know, we, we've shown a fund balance with two fifty, we've shown a fund balance with one twenty-five and now toward the end, we're hearing a fund balance relative to a survival cohort method, which is very conservative. More conservative than that.
Like eighty.
So you're think, you're thinking eighty would be.
Based on, what are you basing eighty on?
So just per, perspective of it's not two fifty.
Eighty students a year?
Let's not assume that, that this year was an anomaly.
Okay.
So you want it based on the cohort survival method?
So that would be about eighty?
Well, I don't, I'd have to run the numbers.
And I guess.
Well, I mean.
I think that's a little conservative, but that's something that she.
My, my perspective on that is one of the reasons we're going through the exercise process is to be able to pinpoint what's appropriate to utilize with regard to open enrollment. What you're asking for is guidance that is going to allow you to prepare some broad projections.
Yes.
For us. And I think if our number were eighty, if it, if it turns out that it's eighty, I'm gonna be one of the people who's looking at our capacity and saying, where do we have spots to sprinkle in some kids?
Yeah, because that's.
And that, that's the purpose of doing it. So I'm, I would be comfortable if you are doing your broad estimates at with the one twenty-five. I don't know that I want to go as high as two fifty. Regardless, it's, you are projecting.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you're estimating.
Yeah, so you get, there's no, there's no lottery for getting the right number.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a difficult number to come up with because depending on what we feel comfortable that we can cut and still protect the student experience and, you know, what residents are coming in and then what kind of space we have for open enrollment, we can make, we have some room to adjust all that. I don't think we can be held a certain number at this.
No, I, is it, then maybe the question is, are you okay if we run our scenarios with the one hundred and twenty-five and stay consistent with that?
I'm fine knowing that it's one hundred and twenty-five.
Okay.
I would be.
Yeah, and I, just to, just to comment to Jonathan, when you talk about sprinkling kids, we just can't create kids.
No, I get it, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, and, 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 and that's why I kind of mentioned that even though we opened it up at one percent at the other grade levels, we didn't fill those.
Yeah.
So, so we need to, if, you know, the spreadsheet that, that Julie came up with where she modified the numbers and the graph change and stuff like that, I mean, that's probably what we're gonna end up having to play with. And that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
We can't just take ones that we want to really, you know, like that. Ooh, we have a spot, let's just grab so and so.
We're gonna recruit that third grader, but your fifth grader.
Are we good now? Are we good now? Are we good?
Uh, yeah, I, 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 you know, we cert, I mean, tonight was an initial, I think, again, I, I, I thank you very much for your engagement in this and trying to understand and, and giving us components to think about so that we can bring components to you to, to give us direction. Um, again, it, you know, the budget, the expenditure reduction piece, you know, if that's, if it's a dual, what we're hearing is it's a matter of both and we just have to understand what that looks like. And if it's anything like we've done in the past, once the board sets the budget in December, then comes the process to, to get to either revenues, expenditures after that, which has been inclusive of stakeholder engagement. So. Um, finally, between now, I mean, we put a lot out there and you've had a really pretty robust conversation. Between now and November eighteenth, if there's things that come to mind or you want to sit down and talk through this again, please reach out. Julie and I would be happy to sit down with you individually, groups of two, certainly we don't want quorum. But groups of two to go through this again or talk about just different components that you're seeing or questions that you have. Um, I know a couple of board members we will reach out to if that's okay, Dr. Stallow, just to invite them in to get them caught up to speed. Again, you know, again, in preparation, but if there's anything that you want to have more conversation about, we welcome, invite you to come in to have that conversation with us.
And I would echo that. Michael and I came and we talked with Julie for about an hour today and that was very helpful to have the face-to-face conversation rather than trying to communicate by email or, or one difference. So I would encourage you all to come over and do that.
Appreciate that. You spend the time to come in and go through everything and it's, you know, you can dig in a little bit further and just trying to understand, get some history, if that's, understand sometimes where the numbers come from.
Also November eighteenth, so we'll have a quick turnaround, get those things put together and continue this discussion. Ultimately, December ninth is, is what we're still targeting for direction and decision by the board to approve the nineteen twenty budget.
If we've given you so much that maybe a couple of your ass or shoulder or skull, just like.
I don't know, tactless, no. I know that he will.
He's not driving out to Calhoun. He's not driving out to Calhoun.
Capacity numbers though, you would have those by the eighteenth?
Yep.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the, um, or governance policy, um, the first three policies, um, are two oh one, two oh two and two oh two point one. These are pretty much standard MSBA policies. Does anyone have any questions on the first one, on two oh one? Two oh two?
Is it standard MSBA?
Yeah, they are. These three are. Not all, not all the two, not all the two hundred policies are, but these first three are.
Okay, that's verbatim. And then the student representative is also.
Well, I was asking about two oh two. No one has anything to say about that one. Okay, two oh two one.
Um, yeah, that's, I know a lot of other school districts do this, but this is, this is our unique one, right? Two oh two and oh one? Is it unique, more unique to us? The only thing that I, and I've questioned this before and I, and I, um, we have a very large school and, and we have one student representative. Should we have more than one or maybe rotate them or something to give other people, other kids on the student council a chance or to participate or anything like that? I kind of think it's up to their members, but they decide.
Pretty much, yeah. They, they decide, more often than not, it's the student council president, but there have been a couple of exceptions where they've assigned somebody else to that position or the other night when we had, um, the vice, the vice chair.
Cane.
Cane. So, I mean, and the student council is their main avenue of, um, information, so probably our best source.
In the policy itself, I think I read that they get the choice to send, to have a second person. So it is sort of, I think, left at the student council's discretion a little bit. But we do say that the student council president, I think, then there can be a secondary person.
Um, just out of curiosity also for leadership and learning, should we take two oh two point one and give it back? Ask them to review it too, to make sure it's written the way they prefer. Since this is so unique. I mean, it's just, it, I don't know, how many boards have?
You know, I just got the question. South Saint Paul is looking to, uh, they're looking to add a student rep to the, to the board. So they, he put out, the superintendent put out, uh, this with multiple folks and, um, I would say half that responded due. And there's probably only twelve in that, in that new serve.
And we didn't initially have one.
When I was on the Southwest Metro, this was a discussion about half of the eleven representative districts there did and they were asking the ones that, that had it, how it was working and what worked for them, et cetera. I don't know, I mean.
To your point, Mary, uh, the, the student rep does get this packet of information. Um, but I could reach out to her to make sure that she, and actually warn her that I would like to call her to give her some feedback on it. And normally she doesn't comment on policies.
Yeah.
So, um, I could certainly do that.
Because if it's okay, I think it would be a good learning experience.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to. I think it's a great idea.
I'll give that to you.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Okay. Any other comments? This is our first reading. Um, the final reading will come to the board meeting in November. Did you have any things to continue to do?
Okay, information. Echo what Jeff and Julie said, I think especially important in the next couple of months as we're seeking parameters and information, direction from board members, really important that if you've got questions, um, please come in and meet with us, meet with whoever it is that is most helpful and useful to make sure that, uh, you've got everything you need to make decisions.
Informational, American Education Week is coming up, um, November eighteenth to the twenty-second. I don't know, do we still do cookies or anything like that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we have to decide if we want to do cookies again? I know, I know last year.
They made pumpkin bars.
Two or three of us went, went to different schools together and that was kind of more fun, I think, and visited.
I think that last year. No, that was.
So two years ago.
But I think.
But I think she usually puts.
Martha usually puts something out so that we know.
To make sure that the schools all get covered by something.
Right. So are, is everyone okay with kind of past practice?
Personally, no. Every year then, it's also the expectation that the board members pay for it.
Yeah.
Why is that? I think it has something to do with the way it's funded or something that we can't run it through.
We can't.
We can't use. The budget, it has to be a person. Yeah, it's funded, sure. I don't have the money to buy no cookies. I think that's the least we should do.
Well, I mean, do they want cookies?
Well, they, they, they do, they're flexible sometimes. I mean, sometimes they cook, like, they make pumpkin bars last year. I mean, so they go with the fan favorite kind of thing.
So we'll go through our, we'll go through our child nutrition services together. Is that what happens?
Yes, they do it as far as.
They can order it.
I thought there was some reason that we couldn't allow them to do it.
I mean, I like a lot of those.
Does everybody want to do that again?
I mean.
I'd support.
I don't care. I, I don't, I, yeah.
I go your way, I don't care.
Yeah.
I don't really know if they eat them. I, the last time that I was involved in it, it was honor society and somebody else had brought stuff. So I mean, the whole staff room was full of those stuff.
Unfortunately, they no longer can provide that.
Okay, so.
It would be just us. Maybe they'll hire a man and.
Because they can no longer provide any.
So it would be just us who don't have that risk in order.
So a lot more pumpkin bars.
Maybe. And that's the reason why you're paying for that as well.
Well, that's fine. I get it.
All right, if everyone's okay with that, or the majority, we'll go forward with that then. Great. I don't believe there's anyone in the audience that's said they wanted to speak. Does anyone want to say anything about what's been on the agenda?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Budget question. What's the expenditure per student?
Just in twelve dollars. What is, what is it? Five?
Yeah, yeah, roughly.